And open the meeting. I mean, same pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, which is the stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Karen, if we have a roll call, please.
Doug.
Here.
Lexi.
Here.
Justin.
Here.
Jerry.
Tom.
Here.
All right, we have some citizens who'd like to address the council. Hit your name and address and what you'd like to talk about.
Caroline, by the way, yes. Um, the request that. Well, actually, first request is do you want to. You want my comments now or should quickly wait until at what point you are. Looking on the resolution for your, um, public hearing standards and. Would you rather prefer.
I'd rather. During that session.
Do you guys think? Probably at that time. At that time, yeah. I'm okay with that. Anyone else might address. Were you. Yeah, sure. Yeah.
Don't ask about construction management for the college. And just I'm here today kind of you. For you folks, if you needed any explanation, I assume that by now you're all aware. That ICC drive is going to be shut down from now through. I'm going to say it'll push out this 15th. With the roundabout coming in and resurfacing blocks and whatnot. And he got with Dean from the city and. And again, I'm not the G C, I'm just the rep for the college. But we got with him and we showed the proofs, I think. You've all done some showing the proofs of the signs. Should be kind of quick and harmless, you know, given that it's not a major thoroughfare. But anyway, I'm just here today, just to give you that. That's the only reason I stopped by.
Is there any signage through town directing them to go to the centrist?
Oh, absolutely. As a matter of fact, um, I thought I was.
It was part of that email.
But I, I, uh, there's two pages to a copy. Okay, and, uh, let me see this. Okay, this is a banner, this first one. This is a banner. Okay, and it's going to go on the east of the roundabout. The, the roundabout on Piazza Street is going to go on the east and on the west. So everybody coming from both directions know we're cutting the road now after Fairway. Right, okay. And I'm not sure exactly where the three drives are, but know this, it will be shut down after. I mean, uh, obviously the alley, the, the long alley will be accessible as well. Right, okay. That, so that goes up at the roundabout. There'll be a double sided sign down at Piazza Street and, uh.
Birds.
Bird. There you go. Uh, on, on the inside corner, just pointing towards Birds Road. With just simply it says N I C C. Okay, so it'll be on, it'll, it'll be a double sided sign sits on that corner. So people will know that's how they're going. And then at N I C C Drive on Birds Road. This and this will pop on either side and. So hopefully you can. That would be fine. And everybody, Dean seemed to be satisfied with that. Uh, the, the sizes of the signs on there. We tried to make it big enough so you can read it. Sure. But, uh, you know, because Birds is the one that caused us as a college the worst. Because they'll get all the way in before they realize they can't get out. But I think we've covered it as well as we can. There'll be people who.
Always will.
Yeah, so.
Probably driving far for them.
So anyway, I can leave you to you if you guys want them. But otherwise, I don't want to take up a lot of your time. Again, hope these years are good.
No, we appreciate you, uh, you coming in, Norman. Thank you, thank you very much.
I know.
Um, I guess before we go further, um. Also to move, uh, Jake and Adam up in the agenda, they're down kind of low. Before we do a public hearing for the budget, any, any issues with that? Okay. Uh. Make a motion. Yeah. I make a motion to approve the agenda. I'll second. Doug, I.
Lexi, I.
Justin, I.
Yeah, yeah. John, I. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
I got some questions. Okay.
We was working on the P C C Center, playground board to, to, uh.
Committee to.
Committee.
Committee.
Have we got that done? I just noticed the resolution still says board.
That's, it's adopted by an ordinance, so the council will have to have another ordinance. Um, removing that board and making it committee if that's what you still choose to do.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda then.
I'll second it.
Doug, I.
Lexi, I.
Justin, I.
Jerry, I. Eric, I. Or John, I. A little not like.
Oh, scary.
What you were thinking there?
I have a camera down right here. Uh, so at this time then, uh, we'd like to move, uh, Jake up the lineup. You guys.
Two Jakes here.
Jake and Jake. Our two Jakes.
Okay, thank you. So we're talking about Kelly at the park. Uh, Dean called me last week to reach out and said the committee, um, would like to proceed with some design concepts for parking lot, playground and shelter restroom at the park that we had developed. Conceptual exhibit, some cost opinion information, uh, three years ago in August, I believe it was. For all. What was offered back then. It just, this wasn't really a full design effort, we just put some thoughts on paper for a conceptual exhibit. Then gave you an idea on the back with the cost of payment. So, you know, it was like playground, here's a $50,000 playground, here's a $30,000. Just pull it through yourself. And then we gave you an idea of a shelter restroom exhibit, the Jackson County Conservation. And, uh, I think it was at that new, um, Mary Creek or something over by the Hoakada. They were the friends of Jackson County Conservation that put that up. Uh, so we pulled that and pulled that floor plan and the structure for that at the cost. And then there was some trail bridge stuff. So that was more just to get some bottom on paper, the budgetary numbers to the city. And then Dean and I met and looked at it and it sounds like the committee is wanting to pursue a parking lot, playground and restroom shelter. And. Pick that off in pieces. And so the agreement that I, that I sent over to Annette is for us to do a couple of design concepts. Um, at least to present that to the committee and see what their thoughts are about the consensuses. Uh, and then come back to council. Uh, with what their consensus was for the design concept, see if the council had any opinion on it. That only, that only could have been across. And then if council elects to proceed, then we would have some coordination every day here to get the construction close. So if we split it out, um, it should be under the bid thresholds. If you have, if you're up against a bid, bid threshold on that structure or the playground, what you can do is if you, I don't know. Is there like a friends of Piazza Park? Down by 103. Okay, so that's how a lot of communities, when they have, I think, either local contractors that want to take it on and avoid the public bidding process. If you, um, donation, a lot of times they'll set, set that 501(c)(3) up to funnel the donation money through it. But then they can also go through and like DC the construction and not publicly bid it. That's how the one over, I think it's Mary Creek was all over by the Hoakada. Uh, that's how get the friends of Jackson County Conservation did that. Uh, we worked with the city of Farley on doing that last summer. You're familiar with some of the park, who was over at Farley last summer, they did that structure that same way. So we would work, this also includes so design concepts and then takes the plans to a level. It's not a final plan for, and full private man or anything for public bidding. It's just to get the final plans, so we get quotes and we get the construction complete without the public bid process.
So this is just for the park on the eastern side, right?
Yeah, and I put, so I took exhibit that we offered three years ago and just kind of delineated the area we're looking at on the back. So yeah, it would be just a playground, uh, the parking lot and the shelter restroom on the eastern portion of the property. On that very east base.
So what about the, the trail through that, has that been designed or where, where's that at or?
No, hasn't been designed yet. No more than back in 2019 when he has here.
So was there a reason that we wouldn't want to have all that wrapped up in one, is there a thought process?
No. Not anymore. We were just, uh, did Dean talk to you about the trail at all? It's just more of the parking lot, the parking lot, the million and playground.
We didn't want to have it. We're going to have a look at the land, look at why not.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Would that be a possibility to throw something like that in there as a?
Yeah, yeah, we can. And it kind of depends, you know, if you run into trying to do all this in one shot, you know, getting, getting a, a playground vendor. Uh, getting close from those guys to come and solve a playground is pretty simple. Uh, there's plenty of contractors that will quote the asphalt parking lot stuff. And then the shelter restroom will easily be done while we did it over in Farley, which we worked at Kelchin and then, uh. He goes by lips, the word and. So whatever for them on, if, if you probably bid a structure like that, it's not very fast effective unless you get to a structure. Uh, especially with, with what a lot of lumberyards do for you design wise on. Materials and that stuff. So if you do that, then you can probably avoid public bidding. We can, we can lay out a trail. Kind of like kind of what we did here, we don't have survey of the whole site, so we just use light art or the good available light art that's plus. But it'll work for that purposes. But if you, if you develop that trail. You know, we had half a million in trail, that 3,000 foot loop. So then you're getting into the.
Three bridges on that, I think.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
But we could do it in stages too, if you wanted to.
Yeah, $140,000 in trail lighting electrical. I don't know if you really want to do that.
We can do it in stages though, like you said, we can do the trail, then put lighting it later. Do the chip and do bridges or whatever.
So we can piecemeal and do it in phases. And it wouldn't, I mean, it wouldn't cost that much, this is time material. Um, I can always shoot it over if we're getting close to it. And like the trail we don't have in this scope, I can approximate this. But we got a quick plan and profile and costs, but if we're not talking about financial plans, but believe it. I think. You're probably going to, yeah, you're going to exceed the public bid threshold if you develop that 3,000 foot loop.
That's with lights and.
But even without the lights, so even if you subtract the lights and subtract the 225K that we had for structures. It's still going to be. Yes, we're going to be over.
That's because of bridges.
What?
That's because of the bridges.
No, that's.
That's just.
Even if you, even if you subtract out the trail lighting, electrical and the bridges.
But either way, we're going to, we were going to want this plan, right? We're going to want the, the information anyway, right?
Well, yeah, I think we want the information for sure.
Right.
We can concept it, but to get it to the level where we go to, to, to public bid, that wouldn't be, we could probably get it performed under this amount. If we just concept it, have a plan and profile, it doesn't take that much, but to get it to the level of public bid.
We're going to go to step one, which he's got outlined here and then. Yeah, next, you know, do it in two stages. So are you going to be there in like 19th at the?
Plan, yeah, the plan is to try to have a couple of design concepts ready. And then, I don't know, Dean was, I think, going to reach out to the committee and try to push everybody to go look at the Farley structure.
He said something.
Maybe he took care of.
I'll send those around, he did, he did send, uh, some pictures.
So, uh, the structure that we provided three years ago. Was like 240. But I don't, I'd have, you'd have to update the numbers depending on what's supposed to.
Yeah, the construction costs are down, so it's. Transportation, everything's down.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, the, the plan was to push and try to have a couple of design concepts we need to look at.
Do we need a motion or anything on this?
Yes.
Is that including the trails?
No. It's just this.
But you're, you're going to give us a design concept with it.
If we, yeah, if we just throw a couple of two plan profiles together and use light art for our surveying of property. If we're not getting final plans together, to get a contractor on board, we can do it. We won't put that much into it. And that's going to be a public bid project anyway. So we'll take a different level of whatever than getting round plans, which is cool.
I'll make a motion for MSA's concept plan, cost of bidding for Kelly Oakes.
A second. Doug, I.
Lexi, I.
Justin, I.
Jerry, I.
John, I.
Motion.
So I'll revise our scope naturally, I'll be sort of.
Okay.
We'll keep the budget the way it is. Okay.
Great, thanks Jake.
Thanks, everyone.
That will bring us to F. I'll send you an invite for the 19th too. He's with him.
Oh, nope. No, you're not. I've got.
Sorry.
It's all right if I sneak up here.
Yeah, sorry.
I thought I took your Jake as plural.
That's, yeah.
Uh, so I've got reconsideration, uh, the application now into the highway station project. So as you'll see, this project is, is nearing completion here, uh, the new lift station is operational. Um, the charges, uh, costs in this application is for the completion of the new force main. See the commissioning of the standby generator is another site upgrading. Work. Our, our site inspector, never been, uh, did a walkthrough.
Any questions for Jake? Make the motion to make the payment, payment number nine on the highway 20th station force main project. A second. Doug, I.
Lexi, I.
Justin, I.
Jerry.
John, I. Motion carries. Thanks Jake.
Thanks Jake.
Anybody else want to jump in front of Adam at this time? Sorry.
No, you're fine. Good to meet you, everyone. Uh, for those who don't know, hey, you know, you'll be in the area, you're in council, Adam's director of health and national. Who is the representative of the city for both the health insurance, the dental and medical, as well as public casualty. So nice to meet the whole area of health. Uh, and so I'm going to run through things clearly quickly, just for the sake of time, I know you guys have a busy agenda. But I'm going to go and start with the, the spreadsheet that looks like this. Okay, uh, and this is your guys' health renewal, this comes out effective July 1st. Um, overall, things were really, really good compared to what we're seeing out there in market space. Um, and so on that spreadsheet, you're going to have current plan. The renewal plan, you have one alternative on there. Um, and the alternative is on there to show you, we're still calling it a good spot, okay? So on the current plan, I'll, and again, I'll walk you pretty high level, what you guys have. Um, you have grandmother plan, okay, but that means when the Affordable Care Act was passed. Um, if you remember, the president said, hey, if you would like to keep your plan, you certainly can. The way the legislation was written, you really couldn't. And so they had to pass another legislation to make sure that you could keep the plan. Okay, and we're on one of those plans getting all the way back from 2014, okay? And so we're not rated like the Affordable Care Act plan. And so when you're looking at the spreadsheet, you see, hey, if I'm a single employee, my cost is the same no matter what employees, same for the family. You go on the far right side, you can see everyone has a different rate and that's all based on age. Okay, it's important to know for the conversations we'll get to on your side, okay? So you got a $500 reduction for a single, thousand for family, $2,000 maximum for the family, 4,000. Uh, for single, for the single, 4,000 for the family, and we have copays built in, okay? So you can see overall, the renewal was just under 4%, okay? We're seeing anywhere from 7 to 12% increases across the board, overall, a pretty good renewal, okay? Um, and this is still rated based off of a lot of the city's merit, meaning what did the employees have for plans? Okay, so obviously we must be trending okay. On the right hand side, it's all strictly based off of age. Doesn't matter if you are the healthiest person on the planet or the sickest person, your, your rate is going to be the same through the same age, okay? This isn't a Affordable Care Act plan, I showed that to say, hey, we're still in a good spot. To run some people up the speed that are newer to the council, we've had a lot of conversations on what can we do to try to curb the cost of healthcare? Okay, and so last time we had spoke, we talked about, can we implement a, a plan where we purchase a higher deductible? Funded down for, uh, the employees so they're not being struck with this huge, uh, potential increase in deductibles, okay? Obviously, there's costs associated with that where the city would have to fund the difference between those deductibles, okay? And so on the second page, you, you won't see pricing on this sheet. Because I wanted to show you what it looked like if you were to purchase a higher deductible plan, okay? And so we have had talks, um, with, with employees, we've had talks here on during work session. That walk through what it would look like if we were to purchase one of these plans, okay? So on the second sheet, I'm laying out what these plans look like for what the city would purchase, not what the employees would see. Okay, so for example, the first one is a $6,900 deductible, high deductible health plan, and you can partner with that health savings account, okay? The other one is a Walmart plan and the $7,000. And when I had first talked to medical associates who we're currently with, they stated that they wouldn't be able to do this, this fund down. Um, because they don't work with outside third party administrators, okay? So what will happen is we purchase, and I'm going to go through a lot and get into the weeds a little bit, so stop me if you have questions, okay? So we go to medical associates and decide it's a $6,900 deductible. Employees, for example, forget we would use maybe a $5,000 deductible or $2,000 deductible, okay? What happens is that in between there, we're not going to want to have care in, in that, keep track of all these employees deductibles. Have employees come to them with all their information, it's going to have a lot of headaches for them, it's going to create some potential pivot issues. So we would want to hire what's called a third party administrator to handle all that for us. Okay, they're going to pay the claims, they're going to keep track of the deductibles, they're going to pay the physicians. And so come to find out, medical associates, they actually have their own third party administrator that would do it for us. So we can go with medical associates or we go with Walmart, okay? And we would hire a third party administrator, doesn't matter who that is with Walmart, as long as they will get a fee from them. And meaning each week, Walmart would send a claim fee to that third party administrator to process those things on behalf of employees, okay? So the employees need to know what's going on because they will see bills coming from the hospital, the doctor, that they may owe above and beyond. What they're familiar with, a maybe $1,500 deductible or $2,000, whatever we pick. Because they need to know that it's going to be processed again by a third party administrator so they know what they're paying for, okay? I'm going to stop, I, I went through a lot there, questions. Okay, here and now, I'm going to keep going forward. So on this sheet, and again, we're, we're talking about this now to implement something potentially for January 1st. And the reason why we, we have a July 1st renewal now, but we're looking at a January 1st is because all the deductibles rollover affected January 1st. Okay, as well as we have a flexible spending account. If we keep that, everyone has to tell like the November, December timing period, what they're going to put into that flexible spending. Well, if we roll over right now to a July 1st renewal for one of these higher deductibles, people are going to have a hard time expecting they were going to get 12 months to spend all that money. And now they're only stuck for seven, okay? So that's why we're looking at the, uh, the January 1st date, okay? So in this, I illustrated a couple of different options to show you if you were to go with a, a high deductible health plan. Fund it down for lower deductibles for the employees, what that would look like and what that would cost, okay? There's certain things, regulation wise, we have to go through, I won't go very detailed with those. That's another conversation for another day, just understand that for family deductibles, we have to do certain things with that to make sure it's in compliance. Where someone can still contribute to a health savings account, okay? So on this one, the first, uh, page there, what I did is I illustrated, okay, we're going to have $1,500 deductible for the employee, $3,000 for the family. That's that first section, the next section where it says 69 slash, uh, 13 eight, that's what the city would purchase, okay? So we're going to fund that down. And then in the middle, who's on our plan, where it says self funded exposure calculation, all that's the worst case scenario. So if all the employees reach their maximums and their dependents and their spouses, the city could be on the hook for almost 130,000, okay? Never seen it where in my entire life, never will, uh, you're not going to have every single employee reach their maximum unless you lay down marginal pools. Obviously, friend or risk, okay? So I reached out to medical associates and said, how many people last year met their deductible? Of all the people that are on our plan, eight people did. And that's including dependents, spouses, employees, um, I think we have close to like 30 or 40 total people on our plan. So we're at, I figured about 25% to be safe, okay? I would put a worst case scenario to say, hey, I think 45% is probably pretty sufficient to see where that gap could be. Where 45% of our population is going to meet their maximum, okay? Which equates to almost $60,000 that the city would, would be on the hook for on top of the premiums they're paying to the medical associates or what. Okay, this example is my. On the very bottom, you can see what we have there is, hey, our premiums. Plus from medical associates, plus that 60,000, okay? We're coming up with $237,000 in expenses, okay? And we said, hey, we may want to fund the health savings account for our employees. And so you can see, we said, hey, and again, these are all the type of that. Okay, um, and I have to project what January 1st rates would be because they're not out. In fact, July 1st rates for Walmart aren't even out yet. So I'm, I added about 6% on top of where we would be, okay, to get that number, um, of that 237,000. Then we said, hey, we have, we're going to put in $22,000 total into all these employees HSA's, okay? Because when, if you're familiar with the HSA, right now the employees have copays, if they go into the doctor, they have copay. With a high deductible plan, you're going to have to pay 100% of everything until you meet your goal. There's going to be a little bit of learning curve, we don't want to just go everyone to the walls. We want them to have it be a benefit, um, for working for the city instead of having it be a hit, okay? So you can see a total cost estimated would be about 260,000 compared to what I projected to be in January of 2018. So we'd save about $20,000 if all the, if everything works out the way we showed it here, okay? Questions?
There is, there's downfall though, that if more people, that the 45% or. If, if more people hit the out of pocket max, that number could grow.
Yes.
So there is a downfall.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, that 45% is a educated guess based off of what we know about the group. Um, it's an educated guess on what I've saw as experience, so most I've ever seen in the 12 years I've been doing this is about 44%, okay? Now, we can be that statistic, we surely can. Okay, so we add the factor that if, it could be 25%, so we could, you know, say, hey, we, we had a really good year and we're going to save even more. It could be 65% and say, we just wrote it all, our potential saving. Okay, so understand, we're taking a risk by doing this where on the current program we have now, we pay the premiums, doesn't matter how many companies we have. It is what it is, it's locked in for you, okay? Does that make sense, everyone follow us apart, okay? On the second page is, um. On the second page is, um, I believe we have the medical associates there, um, and, uh, trying to figure out. Oh, sorry, the first one is where we're currently at, we were to move today, okay? The second page is using that increase of that six percent, okay? So currently, you know, we save about twenty thousand, and then if we jump everything up that six percent, we're gonna save potentially three. So that's that second page. And then the last page is using the Walmart scenario, okay? You can see same information. You can see that, you know, if we were to compare, try to compare apples to apples, medical associates are all six grand cheaper than the Walmart. So medical associates estimating what it would be in January is two hundred and seventy, Walmart is two hundred and seventy six thousand. Again, just preparing for what it's, could look like in January. But at this time, or July, my recommendation would be to stay with the current plan, and then we will continue to evaluate this coming closer. When I say coming closer, January, October time period. Cause, and, and again, I don't want it to be where the employees are caught off guard. We've had, already had conversations, um, if we're thinking that, hey, this is the road we wanna go down, we'll continue to have those conversations and educate them on this is what it looks like, here's your next steps, things like that.
What's, what started this conversation? Didn't you present that you thought the, the rule was gonna be more than a four percent increase a little bit ago?
Yeah, so we were concerned that it was gonna be, um, somewhere around that twelve percent. And that's where it really started saying, okay, we've gotta do something. Cause you can't keep taking, you know, ten, twelve, eleven percent increases year after year after year, that's just heat from hot weather, so. And this, and if we go this route, I, I tell you, something you also consider is, if our base premiums are, you know, maybe a three hundred thousand, and we move to a base premium of two hundred and twenty thousand, again, that six percent increase is gonna look a lot better on a two hundred and twenty thousand basis point. You gotta factor that in. Questions for myself, anything I can address? I went through a lot there, so.
I think I agree with him on, I mean, a four percent increase, as, we don't like to see increases, but, I mean, in, in, where, in my world, check with the benefits department, and he's spot on, the, the, the increases are between six and fifteen percent. So, I mean, as much as we're taking an increase, I don't think, I don't think a four percent increase is high enough problem to just create a bunch of unknowns that we just don't know.
Okay. Any other questions then for Adam?
And if we change plans, then we're, we're not grandfathered in no more, correct?
Correct. Yeah, and that's where, thank you for reminding me, that's where that grandfather says comes in. Once we go, we can never go back. Thanks, Adam.
We need a motion.
Yes.
I'm making a motion for a new one, point nine three percent.
Lexi A.
Justin A.
Time.
You seconded that, correct?
Yes. Thanks. I know it's a lot of work.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
Uh, to the public hearing for the budget? Questions, comments from the council, or any? Anyone from, anyone online have anything? Questions? Concerning the budget? Uh, to the resolution approving the budget?
Make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
No, guy.
Lexi A.
Justin A.
John.
Motion carries. Moving on to the resolution approving and adopting the annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty three.
I have a question on this. Okay? How can we approve a resolution when there's no doc, doc, documents attached to that showing the budget?
It's in the public hearing. Fiscal year twenty three budget.
Neither can.
Even like all the equipment stuff that, that's purchased, I didn't see that in.
Like you used to see in the past with all the different spreadsheets and breakouts and all that, the actual budget, you know?
Right.
Yes.
Well, this is the same information that we got there when we set the public hearing. Um, it's just, it's repetitive.
But I'm saying, I think it needs to be, budget needs to be attached to that, so we can, because that's what we're.
I can't hear you.
The documents need, need to be attached to that, so we can see what we're proving. Because like I said, it's, it's not in there as far as line items, as far as equipment and stuff that's being passed.
Went through that with the work session, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, but, but what I'm saying, it should be tight to this. Everything else we approve is, as the resolution always says, the doc, the documents do it.
The thoughts, John?
Is this what we've always looked at each year?
We do give you this each year as well, yes.
The measures that we see.
The last couple of years, I think they've done more of a high level, was my understanding. I haven't done, I did do the budget this year. I have not done the budget for the last three years, I didn't do. Um, and I'm not sure what was provided to the council. I think, I, I don't believe that the document spreadsheets were provided, I do think it was more high level, um, documentation, but I can't say that for sure.
If you don't approve the resolution tonight, what happens?
We can approve it at the next meeting. No, we can't, at least there will be a special meeting, the public hearings already been held. But the, the budget does need to be approved before the thirtieth of March and submitted.
And we need to prove it with the condition of adding those other sheets to it?
You can approve it, we can always add sheets to it. We can, we can email you guys the sheets.
You just want the line items then, right?
Thank you for proofing now, then, is our.
You want it included in the resolution, though?
It won't be with the resolution done. It, it isn't part of the resolution. It's never been part of the resolution. The, the resolution, um, the annual adapted budget summary is attached to the resolution, that's the only thing that's attached to it.
And you guys talked about this on the third? Is that the work session, the one I missed?
I think there was a budget work session on January twenty fifth that it was talked about. It was, yes. And it was also talked about on February third as well.
That's when, you know, those guys came in and talked about what they actually wanted. I don't think we've actually seen a breakout of how it's all laid out, though. Um, other than this.
What's everyone's feelings about approving the resolution with?
On February fifteenth budget work session, there was a project list included in the public content along with a levy rate comparison, um, a levy, levy rate scenario, and our goal setting report.
And that would be the items you're looking for, Doc?
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, I, what if stuff changed without a stone in between now and then, within and now?
You would have been notified, it wouldn't be changed.
But I don't know that.
We set the public hearing on February twenty second, there would not have time for us to go in and make it. I mean, we made little changes, like if you said to take something out, we didn't have time to go and change a lot. And we certainly can email you all of the budget spreadsheets if you want, though.
So I guess our, our, our choice is here is to approve this as yet, or do a special meeting with those attachments. Right, those are, those are choices here.
By the thirty.
By the thirty, which is next one. So is that, is that what you prefer to do?
That's what I prefer.
I don't think we need it, I mean, I don't, I, I could vote on it today.
Okay, Justin, you feel?
I see where I was coming from, but I think it's, everything's in there, I don't know what would have gotten changed. Like it, I could go either way.
Jerry, your feelings?
I just looked up the checklist that we went through on the fifteenth, and we didn't ever see anything actually after the fact that we went through on that. Who did not approve, and the levy rate, I'm still kinda questioning whether we fell with that.
So my opinion is, I can, I, I'd feel comfortable going on this tonight. Is doubt on it?
Nice to see.
That I think maybe we should. Just, just make everybody feel comfortable. I, like I said, I, I feel comfortable going on a bit. I don't wanna, I don't wanna say shove anything down anybody's.
Sure, yep.
We, we both have time to do another public hearing, so I caution you that you can't raise anything, you can lower.
I think we just wanted to do it.
Yeah, I think.
Right, you just can't, you can't increase anything on that.
Understood.
So do we need to set a meeting now, or?
Something probably ain't gonna take. By the time they get the sheets out.
Karen, you'll get those sheets out.
I know, we'll get them out tomorrow.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thursday.
The meeting is on Thursday, I will not be here, in a sidewalk committee meeting. Thursday at six.
Six, that's right.
And we have a meeting on Tuesday? First meeting on Tuesday, no?
It's Tuesday, look, just a week from today, that'll be, everybody to the time?
If there's any chance we can do it on Monday, the twenty eighth.
On the twenty eighth?
I'd rather have it sooner.
Sure, yeah, no problem. Twenty eighth then, agreement, okay?
Need a business?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to table the adapting the annual budget.
Lexi A.
Justin A.
Monday at six P M. Does this do anything with everything below this, as far as?
I would say yes, except for the resolution amending the resolution for fiscal twenty two. That is more, that'll increase the bartenders, that was the only change to that previously adopted resolution.
Seeing motion to table C and D?
If you want to.
Make a motion to the table C and D. Have it held on the same night as when you see it for the twenty eighth. One second.
Lexi A.
Justin A.
Moving to the resolution, amending resolution twenty twenty setting wages for part-time seasonal temporary employees of the city of Piastza fiscal year twenty two. Do you have any questions or discussion on that resolution? And basically, this was just level four was changed.
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution, amendment resolution twenty twenty one slash fifty five, resuming setting wages. Seasonal and temporary employees of City of Piastza.
I'll second it.
Lexi A.
Justin A.
Motion carries. Video assignments? You want to have any questions, uh, maybe a little clarification on my part, is I, my intent is to sit down with these committees once we, uh, get everybody set, um, and have the committees have an idea of which direction of the, to go, kind of a little synopsis in there. I'd like to sit with the committee and get input from the committee members of the council and, uh, members of the, uh, community. And I think, and that, four of the committees have somebody so far?
So we're waiting for, um, residential representative for the sidewalk committee, and I believe
Parks and Trails. Anyone have questions on any of the committee assignments or any of the synopsis there?
Parks and Trails, we have Todd Sills and everybody that's not a part of the city, part of that, that's what you're looking for.
Yep, they need to be a Piastza resident.
They do, not a Piastza resident.
The, the attorney, he was hearing him and Amber's because of his background, I think that's, that's what I've been, that's why he was asked to sit on that.
I'm just saying, Jesse would be out there, man.
Well, maybe we could get a special exception for Todd, since he was a big part of the Keep Out Beautiful, um, board beforehand, so. Since we made it for a period. She's on a tune, she didn't show up.
All right.
Well, we can ask her. For Todd. Nineteen, eighteen.
So tentatively, we'll put Todd.
Or Melinda.
Or Melinda.
Burt.
Burt. And if we've made an exception before, I don't see any reason we can't make another. These are just advisory committees, so there's, it's just to advise the council on directions when we have projects that pertain to the committee. Any other questions? Right, um, sidewalk committee, committee report.
Anything to report?
Pretty much got her. Or sidewalk, I did it. Thursday.
Okay. The chat committee?
The old and the new.
The old. The new has not.
Oh, I guess your last report, Jerry.
More than happy to pass the time, not gonna lie. We met and reviewed the wages and everything. There's some discrepancies I saw in that that I wanted to discuss with the mayor, I guess. But other than that, everything else looks pretty good. Doc, you got anything?
Nope.
It's been, been a pleasure working with everybody. You know, it's really good to see the networkings of the city. You don't, you don't know how much is actually going on behind the scenes.
Really don't. I will, I will concur with that. We appreciate your efforts, both you and me. Alright, moving on. Resolution deleting property from the Piastor urban renewal area. We've discussed this. You guys had a chance to go over it. Do we, we understand what's going on there? Everybody, everybody know what's going on with that? Why it's being removed? It's not just a permanent, throwing it out the window, never looking back? Jerry, is this where you wanted to talk? Is this the one, is this the one that you wanted to speak on?
No, it is, but it'd be nice to open what you were talking about.
What, what's happening, Karen, is the founder general is, has applied for a. And when they approached the city, that was back in 2019, and that's when that area was added into the urban renewal area. Which really sets the clock for 20 years. So now they're kind of lagging in time, so they've already lost three years. We want them to be successful. We want them to be able to get the reimbursed cost back that they were promised. So we're taking the, the property out of this area and then we're going to add it back in, so it restarts the clock and allows them to get the increment through that development agreement. The, the urban renewal area is 20 years, but the agreement is 15.
I thought it was probably something like that, but I can't imagine anybody leaving, but I understand that. It's fine. No problem.
Thank you.
To approve of this?
So it's, it kind of leads to the, the first reading of that ordinance, taking that property out. And then the next item is we're asking the council to waive the second and third readings so that we can adopt this in alpha character number four. So it's just a process of taking it out, making sure that we do the proper readings and then passing the ordinance.
Section E as well.
E? So we need a motion to approve the first reading or does it just?
The resolution.
Resolution first.
I'll make a move of approval. Make the, approve the resolution deleting the property from the Piastor urban renewal area. I'll second.
Lexi.
Justin, I.
John, I. Motion carries.
Okay, and then item B would be the first reading deleting that property.
I'll make a motion deleting the. Property from the tax increment, financial, financing district of the Piastor.
Second.
Lexi, I.
Justin, I.
Item C is waiving the second, third readings.
I'll make a motion to waive the second, third readings.
I'll second it.
Lexi, I.
Justin, I.
And item B is adopting the ordinance and deleting.
Make a motion adopting the ordinance. Second.
Lexi, I.
Justin, I.
This is where I come in.
Resolution said.
This resolution said that they have a public chairman on the foundation. Castor, the urban renewal area. You have our parcel plan and you have to see that as a first thing. And we're talking about putting it in the plan for the urban renewal plan. And you're talking about the demolition of pop houses and properties. And we're requesting that both these parcels be taken out, removed from the urban renewal plan. If there's been no request, proposals, or assignments, or agreements on these properties. Sometimes agreement comes to be, the urban renewal plan can be amended at that time. But for right now, at this time, we thought it was understood that the entirety of our parcel was not to sale off. But that negotiation could move forward if the property needs to go forward because you're, that's your project. Now, that's our list. Now, there's been nothing formal, no ready, no. So urban renewal has been mentioned to have residential property. Not only are you developing our property as residential, but we think behind this and around this. We have the same problem. We're trying to tie our. Don't think they should be in here at this point in time, this process. Now, attention, please. These two parcels should not use because it's gonna, if you try to. It's gonna be complicated. The other projects that are involved with this are going to slow down too. We, we won't negotiate in good faith of property, of the project. But what you're doing here. It's gonna get into the elements or something. I mean. You've taken away the right to have a residential property in the purpose, a residential property when you put it in urban renewal plan. We're saying that we can't sell it as, as residential.
You can. Just because it's put in an urban renewal area doesn't restrict you from doing anything on the market. Adding on to it, it just designate that area. If we choose to move forward, like you said, in good faith and do negotiations, then we can, any projects that we do on that property, then we can use TIP.
What you do on that property shouldn't involve whatever property you need, not a residential.
I, I didn't catch that last word.
What you do on that property and what you want put in urban renewal shouldn't involve all this. And Piastor's never done urban renewal on residential. I mean, we're not trying to swap the project. We just don't want to be part of it. I don't know if all of us got a chance to read through the plan. Exhibit A, so we need a section of these two parcels.
What's, what was our thought process of adding that?
To fund.
To be able to fund the project. And if there, if there was, you know, if we came to an agreement on successful acquisition of the property, then we could use monies to do what we wanted with that project moving forward. So that would be the demolition of the houses. If we wanted to convert into a green space, if we wanted to put a gazebo, make it a park. I mean, these are just all ideas at this point. I mean, obviously, just because we designate an area, I mean, we're wanting, we're wanting to do a project there, but that doesn't mean that we necessarily have to. And it doesn't devalue the property because you're not doing anything just by labeling it an urban renewal area.
You can still sell that property as written and pull up the data.
Yes. That doesn't change the zoning at all. It shouldn't do anything, Karen.
With request, they remove these two parcels and this project at this point in time, so you move forward with everything else, move forward with the negotiation and what you need.
Is there a link to not do the entire property, just what we're interested in?
Dean was on the other day. He told us what they were doing and showed us what property we wanted, and we had come to a kind of agreement. And he had included the whole properties, money had included the properties as he wanted.
Yeah.
Not all properties, and this, this says the whole property.
Can we? It'd be nice to have that included. It'd be nice to have that included so we can get some extra money. Could we do an acquisition plan first of what area we want, include that into the?
I would have to talk to Bonnie.
Dean said he was wanting to get into it near, figure out exactly what he wants.
Correct.
And we need some kind of sketch on that. That's why.
I understand they're gonna stake, stake that out for you. I think they're gonna stake, Dean's gonna stake that out. They're gonna stake that out.
Well, that urban renewal area had been discussed prior to the meeting that you had with Steve Thompson and Dean last Friday.
No, it didn't discuss with us.
No, not the urban renewal area. It's been discussed at the council level because we had to look at areas to be, to add into that urban renewal because we're, we're on a schedule too. So again, it's just not, it's not designating an area that is an urban renewal area. It's not going to hurt your property value. It's not going to hurt, it's not going to change your zoning. It just designates that area, the specific area, as an urban renewal.
Yes, it does. If you're gonna want to fire someone, why didn't someone come talk to us about?
Did Dean, Dean talk to you, didn't he?
I did. Why, but I mean.
He didn't talk to us and I told him that I wanted the draft proposal. I told him that from the beginning.
Did we not?
We never got the draft.
This is the first I've heard of it. So I mean, this is the first I've heard of a draft proposal. You mean the draft proposal, the engineering or draft proposal of the law? Okay.
Did you?
Because the seat said she sets up the path. If you did follow the line, how you run a closed session. If you don't mind us being your first part of the closed session. You can negotiate the terms or something. This is for somebody else. This is for something else.
Pretty often it can't be in an open session for council.
Can, can a couple of us come down and be with you?
So did, did Dean not come talk to you about it? I think we were told that at this time you weren't interested in selling home property, correct? So, so there was an offer, not a formal one, but there was an offer.
It's probably, prices change.
Well, I, I understand that, but I mean, it's, it's. We did talk. We did, we did exchange numbers and then now at this point.
Dean didn't?
No, we, we, we talked. That came from us. That came from us.
Well, listen, Dean's not a problem.
No, no, I'm, I'm.
But there's been nothing formal and I don't like to see my property turn up on something like this where nobody told. You understand what I'm saying? This is just turned up and I wouldn't, if I had looked at the agenda today, I'd have no idea if this was one of them. I'm not trying to stop this, or give you the other projects mingle in with it. You want to keep these projects online and negotiate with us what land you need. And tell Shane why his property is in there, then it's known. No, by the way, probably this is never been made off or explained. Some parts itself. It just, it's not logical to me. And I don't want to be tied into this one and add another claim later when it's all settled. But if you want to stay on time at this one, take that process out.
So the purpose of putting ours on so you get more TIP funding?
It's to use TIP funding, funding for the purchase. And for the term.
Right, and for the turn lane.
And, and for the project itself.
And get the turn lane down there.
So. I'm just thinking aloud, if we did an acquisition, if, if we come to an agreement on what property we. Buy from you guys, and we do an acquisition, at that time we could put it in the urban renewal and use TIP money?
We have enough time to. We have a window right now is where we need to add the property. And by adding the property doesn't mean that we have to use the entire property for, in an urban renewal. We can just use the area that we need to complete the project.
That's where we invest our property in urban renewal.
We can take it out, right?
I would think that's all we ask is to take it out.
If you take it out, then we can't use the TIP funding.
You can use TIP funding on a partial part of the property.
We would have to have it reparsaled. But then we wouldn't be able to add it back into the urban renewal right now. It would have to wait.
Right.
So then again, that puts the entire project behind. And it's.
It's not that big of a project. And why would you even be putting, changing property in urban renewal when no one's ever paying on our property? And right away, we, this project, this Piastor project doesn't go onto the property, that's for sure.
Project's done, it's a, it'll go out to.
Temporary right away. Temporary easements.
Being out of this, talking to you.
We have a talk on the details. So if you put this in urban renewal. And then you, you probably can take it back out or?
We can take it out later once we, once the project is satisfied. If we decide to use the TIP funding, we can remove it at a later date. Yes. How much of it?
How much later? How much, how much later?
It depends on when the project's completed.
So.
There, there were properties out on Thunder Valley Drive that did this. They had their property taken out of the TIP. So that they could put it back in, so that they could go into an agreement with the city. So yeah, we can, we could reparse it. Add it back into the urban renewal area. That would remove your area that has your houses and the garage and just give us, allow us the, the feat that we need to do the turn lane project. It, it's pretty intensive when you're looking at doing these urban renewal areas. I mean, it's paperwork, so.
Six months, you talk.
We could be. We could, we very well could be.
How much was six?
I would say six, I didn't hear of 20 years, I'm sorry.
Oh, six.
Because we want to add these urban renewals in as you're doing your budget.
They were looking at.
I'm sorry, what?
It could run out in a year.
It could run out in a year?
It could run out in two years.
It, it just depends on if it, if we put it in there and, you know, the project moves ahead and we use it to, to fund the project or if we, if we take it out and we don't decide to have it in that urban renewal. I mean, it's, it's either there or here. I mean, it's up to the council if they want to remove it.
So if we add this land into the urban renewal. We finish the project, say in August. Okay, I think what, what we was asking is at what point are we able to remove the land from urban renewal?
Well, you have to remember that, like with any, like with your property taxes, there's 18 months in arrears, so you're waiting.
Right.
To get that time value of money back, so it could be a couple of years.
Three, two, three.
Three.
Any benefit for them to be in urban renewal?
Pardon me?
Is there any benefit for them to be in urban renewal?
It is for the turn lane project, yes.
Benefit for the city.
And without going into closed session discussion, I really can't say anymore.
There's, there's nothing in it for us to do in urban renewal.
So benefit to us, yeah.
It's not, it's not benefit.
Actually, we. We're working to be, well, we're, we were working to be able to be, but you know, the opportunity to be a gentleman. And this was kind of the first I've heard of it today.
If I had moved, agenda, they had absolutely none, obviously, but it's not going to be.
We don't have any idea what our rights are, or what we're benefit, or, you know, we don't know. Because they, nobody mentioned it before this time. Well, it's one, about putting our whole properties in urban develop, urban renewal, whatever. They, they've just been telling us they wanted the right ways to do this turn. They've they've just been telling us they wanted the right ways to do this turn. So, you know, we gotta have him let us trade.
I don't want you to feel that way.
This time, and we can put it back in. That way, you're not considering the other projects, you're online, not online. And even this one could be finished up, so we can use that property.
So we had two options, do I see it? You either approve it, or I'm assuming we'd have to table it to remove the properties.
So this, what this is, what this resolution is doing is setting the public hearing date. So the council can.
Set the public hearing date.
Date and we can.
Will amend it.
Or you can table it.
Get that far first.
Or you can table it and have it brought back to you at the next meeting.
So we can, we can.
If you take those two parcels out, you keep your public hearing, but go on about your business.
So can we set the public hearing date, have further discussion amended before the public hearing?
I would want to probably talk to bond council for sure about that, but I think.
But my thought process, keep the ball rolling and then.
Just take these two parcels out right now and keep all of it, and when you can add it back, it will be. Or you can leave a separate one. There's no reason for these two parcels to be in this plan right now.
Realistically, with NICC doing their roundabout, this is probably gonna get that fired a little bit too now. You're not gonna wanna rip that corner up with that tropical.
Well, there's more wondering about this, so I'm sorry, you're gonna have both both and there's there are. I can, you're gonna have to work that out with them.
I might borrow a little bit of your yard there.
That's where the turkey.
But that is what I'm asking, that would be the simplest solution at this time. I mean, we got no problem negotiating what is needed for that turn line and just then, yeah. It's just the housing market, everything else, you know, for our property in our age, it'd be ridiculous to try. Just because of the way we're here this time.
Just so we know, moving forward, both you guys in the same room here. And any proposal, any offer, Brad, do you want it written versus having Dean come and talk to you about it?
Well, I don't mind talking to Dean, but it would be better to have a written proposal so I know that everybody's on the same.
Yep, oh, absolutely.
I mean, even though it's just a draft. Um, we could work out that, then we know, you know, everybody knows where everybody's starting.
Just let me, cause and you and you didn't know this, but like when Dean came to talk, it was from us. It was directives from us to to speak with you at good pay, good faith. Right, so that, just so you did know, I mean, it it that came from, we've had meetings talking about things too.
Well, I, you know, I. I assume that, you know, I'm not saying that. You don't see me, but we have no problem. But I had said, I'm saying, send me that proposal that you wanna do. And I'll send that to you. And now everybody knows what everybody's thinking. They don't do it. But they just, what I say needs, it's two parcels from long this time.
I personally think I need more information as far as. What it, what it, what it means for us, what it means for them. I don't think I completely understand that.
As far as removing and putting back in.
The whole, the whole process of that and and what if 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 we're to remove their land from this, what what does that mean for us? If we, if we wanna keep it in there, what that means for them.
Sure, and and.
Just truly, what, what's the detriment of staying in there, is there a benefit, is is? I I don't know, I don't know, I don't, I don't know.
Means, you know, we could, we, we have to go get more.
Well, I, no one wants anything that that to come to, I mean, I just, I just need to educate myself.
We do too, I mean, because like I said, I had, I had no idea about this, so it's actually, I have no idea. But that's about that's changing zoning, not just zoning. Because if we're zoning something else, it would affect their property. You know, if you go into a urban renewal, I can't imagine that it won't affect.
I don't know that.
And and I'll seek opinion.
Because because the asset's never done this with residents, they've never put a residence to be living in. Into an urban renewal area, that's just not done. Unless property was out there sold, even if it's a site.
I, the only reason why I'm looking at those two areas is because it's a go, it's have the turn lane and and kinda. Run it over.
The residential, and like I said, yes, it's not.
Right, and just, there's a lot of, a lot of things that we probably haven't done that.
Well, you really wanna get into that.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying, just because we've never done it, doesn't mean.
Talking residences for people, but we're talking a different type of.
Sure.
We're not talking.
And that's what I wanna, that's what I wanna get to educate myself on.
You're talking here too about description of project, project site, if you ask that bird's turn. Look at them, demolition of existing houses on the turn lane.
Wrote up before?
Pardon me?
Was this wrote up before we got an answer back from them?
Yes, I mean, this has been, this has been something that we've been discussing with bond council for a couple of months.
Yeah.
And I mean, this would be if we were to get property acquisition, this is what we we talked about doing, so, yes. That's why it was added into the plan and worded the way it is.
Don't you think it would have been just common courtesy?
Again, we were thinking about if we got to the point where we could do a property acquisition. And you believe the property, what would we do with the property? And that's what we put into the the U R amendment. If this is what we would do if we had, you know, property rights, correct?
Right, correct.
So I think, I think, I, so I'm not able to go on this. Are we able to?
Table.
Table it to 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 learn more about this? What does that do to, what does that do to?
All see the same, you should put them on and carry on with that.
I don't need to do that.
We've got several, see, there's so many projects, they do this.
That's typically how they are done, though, we group them together because we're paying legal for the agreement.
But you've got, how many projects, you've got the community center project. And I think it actually ties in with the Dollar General project. And your power plant, whatever that deal is. You got a whole bunch of other projects in this. And if you just take these two off and carry on.
That's what I don't, that's what I don't understand, is I don't understand. That's what I wanna learn.
Them two up and then carry on.
I wanna learn what the hell that's gonna affect everything else.
I'm not here to start all these projects. I'm here to get these two taken out until around solid.
And we're not here to take them, we just want parcels out, the parcel numbers, part of understanding. The, as far as the right of way, you want, that's still.
Okay, we're gonna talk about that.
You saw one, parcels put in urban development. I mean, that's.
I mean, it's not like you can't do this to these downtown man, and I realize it might be the one.
I think we need to change the description of the project anyway, right? I mean, that has to get done anyway, we're not gonna.
But the overall sure is that that was, you know, that was the option we were looking for. I mean, I would think that you would wanna put something in the plan amendment that would describe it if you were to able to acquire the entire property. Versus just the the square footage that you would need, that's all this plan amendment does.
So can we table this until the next meeting or special meeting on the twenty eighth, does that give us?
I don't know, we'll have to talk with bond council and see.
Nah, I mean, then it's the next one, right, so.
I already had a request out to them and I didn't get a response today, so I.
Right, I just wanna say.
Right, yeah, I'd like to know what's gonna happen there, moving forward.
So 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 like Karen said, um, if we can't get the information by Monday, can we take that out? Them two parcels out and move forward with everything else and then discuss it with. With the two property owners and do another one or?
Well, that's what I wanna, I wanna wrap my head around what, how that affects everybody involved, how it affects us, um, you know, if we pull that out, what's that do to us?
Shouldn't remember the property itself, you might have a little less.
Right, and that's what I wanna, I wanna see that.
I mean, a big part of them. These two have, I'll say, they only run a, on any.
Right, I wanna know what that much is.
I don't even buy it, it's a funding and something you're not gonna use.
We're gonna be able to use TIP funding because it's in the area. By making that, or what we can use TIP funding for projects in. Yeah, that's that's a whole thing, right, we're not.
No, they're saying, you could use TIP, being it's in there, you could use TIP to move forward with the purchase. Of the acquisition or whatever we need of any part of that parcel.
Turn lane property, whatever it is.
Well, the turn lane property, the latency, the right way, if you're on our side, street owner is not gonna multiple.
But this is, this is what I asked. For you to vote in this resolution, you can't say. Yes, they. Or, like, I, I hate, I'm not here, that is the bucket.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, why is that, first time I do a lot of day two, so.
Yeah, see.
So what we're gonna do on.
Like all this too.
What that entails. I I never even heard of it before, so.
Shane, I'll make sure I reach out to you, okay?
Right, yeah, appreciate it.
You bet. And you as well, Karen, a break.
So you have a special meeting this thing, well, twenty eighth, we're gonna be logged into them.
And Karen, show up, I'm gonna explain, answering questions. Hopefully, we all get better answers.
So you need a motion to table, should we table this?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to table this till twenty eighth, hold on a second.
Lexi, I.
Justin, I.
John.
Does that affect anything below that?
No, it does not.
The resolution for family dollar, Dollar General?
Yes.
Okay.
And what that item is, um, Glenwood Equity, the Dollar General, has a due diligence statement after me. And based on the process that we need to go through for the urban renewal. Um, the development agreement is pretty much ironed out and will be brought back to council for your review and approval. But I I think that they've basically just been dragging their feet on this and it's gotten to the point where they they still wanna move forward with it. We still want them to move forward with the project, so this is just basically saying, yes, we're where the both parties still have an intent to move forward with the project. And this allows them to take this back to their closing, um, for their investors to say, yes, no, this is what we need.
Questions on the. Resolution in front of us for. Dollar General.
Need a motion?
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Lexi, I.
Justin, I.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Takes us to resolution approving the preliminary plat of Callahan Development in the.
Hopefully, you've got an opportunity to review this, I know that me and Kate has looked at it, it's been before planning and zoning. Uh, for their review, and that's why it's before you and Joel's here tonight, so if anybody would have any questions on that. And Matt, who is also online, he's the planning and zoning commissioner, so if you should have any questions.
They wrote on the east side that it matches up with the. Thunder, no.
Thunder, yeah, Thunder Valley Drive.
Yep.
And this will just be an extension of Adrena. So that street will be named Adrena Drive.
And then at Cox Springs, it switches to.
Under, yeah.
A Thunder Valley.
Correct, and by ordinance, we have to extend that name, um, that's, that's what we have in our ordinance, so.
Is there gonna be any parking on the street, similar to what Thunder Valley Drive's got going on, on this?
One side, I think.
I'm just saying fifty, it looks like fifty feet, is that what it is?
Yeah, that's, that's true.
He's saying the width, because we're having some issues with the width on Thunder Valley.
Twenty seven or thirty one? Back to back, a thirty one.
Is there gonna be any on-street parking, I guess, my question?
On-street parking, yeah.
Matt, do you have anything to add?
Um, just that the commission had reviewed the request to split the current partial from. Uh, into into four different sections and I I know that's what you're all looking at, so. There really wasn't anything that the commission saw, um, that, you know, didn't look, didn't look appropriate. As far as, um, how it, how it was split.
Other questions, any questions to Joel while he's here? Oh, Steve, uh, wetland area. What's that, is it just gonna be like a culvert?
Yeah, right now, it's, well, it's still in the final design stages, but it's probably gonna be four or five holes. Um, even if they're around your box. And it's set to the Romanite, it's gonna be set so that there are flood over a hundred year flood. Just like, um, um, Thunder Valley is. And there'll be some, some area that'll be donated to the city. That's kind of the wide way, floodway area. That is the, you know, we gotta add a draw where there could be a bike trail. I I mean, that's city, definitely, it's prime, it's primary for what we. You know, to broaden the bottom side. In ICC, all of it. That kind of matches their master plan of more trails, bikes.
Unless you wanted to do it, donate it.
I'll donate you a bike.
Hey, I gotta ask.
But it's a good area for any little waterways, good for that, yeah.
Make a motion to approve the resolution for the. Make a motion to approve the resolution for the preliminary plat of Callahan.
Second, Doug, I.
Lexi, I.
Justin, I.
Motion carries. Set public hearing for rezone for lot two Clements Edition Southwest. Section zero three two T eighty N R I E. We're just at the day, right?
The public hearing date.
March seventh?
April, April.
That little knowledge gets littler and littler. I'll make a motion to put, set the public hearing date rezoning. Lot two Clements Edition for April's there. April twelve. A second.
Was that you, I'm sorry? Lexi.
Justin, I.
Motion carries. Moving on to resolution setting building permit fees.
This is just a review of, um, contract that we have with V C I A, through the contract, taking a look at, um, what the hourly rates are for the inspector and then his replacement when he's not available and the administrative um, that's involved in this too, that it, the recommendation is to raise the plan review fees that are currently at seventy up to one hundred to cover those costs. Because every time that we make contact with the inspector or Matt who fills in for Craig, there's always that administrative component, um, Sarah Benning involved as well.
And this is just for homes, is that right?
Yes, this is just for residential.
Does, does this just get charged to the homeownership?
It does.
So there's really a net zero cost to the city.
How much time do they spend looking at one of these?
I don't know what Craig spends. He could spend anywhere from fifteen minutes to an hour and fifteen minutes. Just how complicated the plans are. But it goes through the administrative, there's, they have administrative staff that handles things. He passes on to them, um, so on and so forth. I would hope that he's spending more than fifteen minutes looking at the plans.
Just seeing how does it cost us to have them do this?
What's the cost of having them do this?
A hundred and forty-six to a hundred and fifty-one per hour if you're factoring in the administrative cost with the, uh, the cost of the inspection per second.
So it's costing us fifty dollars every time?
Pretty much. Every time the paper crosses her desk, I mean, she's charging this time.
So it's a hundred enough?
Well, again, I thought we would start somewhere.
I don't think the city needs to make money doing it, but I actually don't like the city losing money doing it.
I agree.
I think you need to take it up to even a hundred and fifty, if not even more than, I mean.
Do we have a breakdown of what the average costs are, like, from what they've submitted or stuff that we've had them review?
Per house?
Yeah.
No, we just get a invoice every month on hours and then mileage.
Do we have any idea like what Asbury is charging?
I don't know what they're charging for the plan reviews, no.
I'm just curious if it's typical, the city eats? After that, or?
Why would we wanna eat that?
I know, that's what I'm saying, maybe you make it two hundred bucks. I, I'm just drawing numbers out there that.
Do, do people block at the seventy?
They haven't been blocking for a few years. They know what they are.
Makes seven hundred bucks.
Seven hundred, that's a big job.
Yeah, but you're fairly covering the cost. And nobody's gonna know unless they always. Yeah.
Contractors pass that cost on.
That cost going on to him anyway. Three hundred, two hundred bucks. It's a, the box screws.
I'd say at least, I'd say about fifty. One fifty.
Throw that number. Or do you, do you go all the way up now? Instead of trying to go partly there and then partly there?
Well, you've got a three percent increase that's built into the contract for each year. Three percent's not that much, but it's.
At least, at least it'd be covered for the next four years.
What do you think, Doug? Lexi?
Sounds good to me.
Any and all?
Gave you options and you said it sounds good, yeah, any and all.
I wanna know what, like, an average breakdown of what it costs per house to to do that inspection. Like, if it's just, if it's a hundred dollars, average.
Plan review is what.
Or the planner view. If it's a hundred dollars a house average overall, like, in a month per hours, then I'm fine with that, but I don't. I don't know.
Well, I think the plan review involves him reaching out to the builder.
Yeah.
Questions that he may have, obviously researching the code if he needs to. So, again, I don't know if you can say an average on an average, this is what it, this is what it takes.
Can we get a, do we have a, he reviewed fifteen homes this month and our bill is fifteen, and we know that it's about a hundred bucks.
We basically just get an invoice that says how many hours we'll be go for, whether it's Craig, whether it's Matt and Sarah lumped together and then their mileage.
How many is given? Well, we can take that information, figure out how many we submitted and they reviewed during that period.
Sure, yeah.
Break out an average.
So it includes inspections too, though?
I guess, because it's all lumped together in that invoice, so it's gonna be a little difficult
Or, you know what?
To separate the plan review and the.
Ask him for a separated invoice, uh, uh, just, just more information.
Moving forward?
Well, just for our information so we can get this fee correct.
Okay.
These monthly revenues from building permits.
We're losing money.
From building permits.
Uh, last year we brought in eighty thousand. On residential. Pardon me? Um, I'd have to go back and look at the number.
Let's see, it was thirteen thousand six in my head or something.
Eighty.
Eighty thousand.
They're upside down. Sounds like it. But if you could, if they could give us a breakdown, we, we actually set this right. I mean, our, our, I don't know, two hundred bucks, but if it's two fifty, I don't wanna be short again, right?
Oh, yeah, I definitely don't want to be short again.
But definitely it's gonna be more than a hundred.
Why, just typical. I think, looking at it, it's, it's an hour, I mean, just kind of in the industry type of thing. It's an hour to look at it and probably a half hour of her time to, to do everything. So, yeah. You're looking at a hundred and twenty-five bucks right there, just in that. And that's if it's not detailed. That's, that's just a general broad view. Here's an easy one, probably.
Do we wanna go with the number or do we wanna have more information?
I think, I'd rather have more information. That's, that's right.
Do we wanna cable this one then?
Cable it, ask him for a detailed billing.
Is it, I mean, is there any rush or can we just put it on for the twelfth? Let's just table it for the twelfth, so we're not, we have more important things to take care of for the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, exactly. Did you make a motion?
I'll make a motion to table.
Second. Doug, I.
Lexi, I.
Justin, I.
Resolution approving an engagement letter for audit service with I Bailey.
Uh, this is, this will be our fourth year with I Bailey, so this is just a full process of the engagement letter, asking them to do our annual audit and the resolution approving that engagement letter. So in that engagement letter, it outlines what they will be doing, the detailed work and at what cost.
How long have you said we've been using them?
This will be our fourth year.
Is it the standard that we do these audits each year?
Um, we also have a single audit, again, this year because of the waste water treatment facility. So that'll be an additional cost on top of the twenty-three thousand that they have in there. And that's outlined in the letter.
Motion for I Bailey Audit. Second. Doug, I.
Lexi, I.
Justin, I.
Motion carries.
The next item I did not, I don't have an agreement from our attorney on, so um, hopefully I'll have something back for you on the twelfth. On the right-of-way, the dirt fiber, sure, I mean, I can send you the draft that we have, yeah, yep.
I don't know how that's affected that, if you know how it's got down there.
It's, it's not gonna affect anything. What'll happen is if there's a third party, they would have to go through a line energy. And if they end up setting up one of these boxes, then they have to come to the city to get permission to put that additional box out there. So there's not gonna be any digging of any trenches. This is just sticking fiber or having the existing fiber in that conduit. Already they're just selling it off. That's what they're, and that, that's the agreement that they want us to go into. Just letting us know that it's, it's there on the right-of-way and that they're gonna be selling the fiber. And if for some reason there's a third party that comes in and wants to add fiber to that existing conduit, then this allows them to get the right-of-way, put that box right beside the existing box, but they have to come to the city to get the right-of-way permit. That's basically what that agreement says.
Do franchise fees, stuff.
I'm sorry?
But they'd still have to enter an agreement with the city with franchise fees.
Yes.
The new company. But it's just a line, right?
Yeah.
The five.
I don't know how many strands are in there.
Five-strand line, or they're using three?
Right, so I mean, this is.
Already in the ground, it's not like.
From what they say, they're not making that much money on it, but again, this is just going into an agreement that says if they have somebody in that third party that wants to come and put an additional box out there, they have to come to us to get the right-of-way permit. That's basically all we've been talking about.
We need to table this for the next one or just?
It's, we don't have anything. We don't have anything, so, no, I, like I said, hopefully I'll have something back, um, for April twelfth. Karen, did you still want information? Cause basically that's all it's gonna say.
No, but, you know, like, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, there's this van at nine, ten o'clock at night feeding into one of those things in the park, to my gathering. I don't know, it was in USA.
Yeah, I could have been, sure, but if they've done damage or anything.
Was it for your neighbor to the east? So when I walked, they've got a line that, was it the, your lot or your?
In our yard, there's a, there's a couple of things. And every so often, and they usually go at the middle of the night, they'll pull in a van and they'll be in this. Probably me, um, somebody, my daughter thought they were.
Probably in outage or something.
Maybe it was, maybe it was USA, it can be else, but still.
They do that stuff when it's not peak hours, so if they're gonna make it.
Right, I don't see that, especially on Piazza Street. But still, if it done damage or if the ground was wet. I had no idea, wouldn't say, come fix this, so I don't have to listen to my house.
Need to pass a resolution.
Oh, knock on his window.
It's gonna be a third property, a third party on my property doing this kind of thing, you know, that's.
If it's on the right-of-way.
It'll be on the right-of-way, yeah.
I'm gonna ask you questions. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Personnel release claim, uh, reviewed.
We've had discussions about this in the work sessions, so hopefully you had an opportunity to, to review that.
This was Doug's right up?
Yes, this is straight from Doug Herman.
And he's okay with it, so.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Hold on a second. Doug, I.
Lexi, I.
Justin, I.
Motion carries. Junior Achievement of the Heartland, uh, reached out, uh, to me and asked that we make a proclamation for Junior Achievement Day, uh, so I will read the proclamation. Whereas the city of Piazza will observe Junior Achievement Day on April seventh, two thousand twenty-two as an opportunity to recognize and celebrate junior achievement of the heartland for empowering our young people to own their economic success. Whereas junior achievement of the heartland's educational contribution equips our young people from the next generation, productive employees, self-sufficient citizens to ensure the economic prosperity of Piazza. Whereas it is fitting for parents, educators, other members of the community to join in junior achievements effort to ensure the future success and economic health of our young people and the communities in which we live. Now therefore, I Russ Fop, Mayor of Piazza, do hereby proclaim official recognition of April seventh, two thousand twenty-two as Junior Achievement Day in the city of Piazza. We're gonna, the motion to move into closed session.
I asked Andrew if he had a sense of.
I think the council just asked that the fire department make a little bit more presence at these meetings, so.
Appreciate it.
Is there anything the city can do for you?
Oh, sorry, time's up.
You said no.
We, we are, we do have a public safety committee forum, so, so hopefully that, uh.
Sounds like you might be interested.
You could, uh.
Wait to slide that in.
No, I saw that you guys, uh, take the ambulance, like, five thousand dollars a year. Appreciate that, the ambulance cost for us in years, so thanks for, thanks for supporting vehicles.
On behalf of the citizens of New Vienna, I will thank you for being in, great, I heard quite a presence you had, so. They were in the New Vienna parade on Saturday, Farmer's Day.
One thing I'd like to know from fire department sometime is Piazza keeps growing, when's your guys, it's typically when you're also, you gotta buy, start getting a second ambulance or, or fire trucks or bigger building stuff. Ballpark number out there sometime.
So we do have two ambulances already. Um, one is stationed in Piazza, we just updated that ambulance service, uh, early January. We have our second ambulance in Centralia, like I said, that one's a little bit older right now, I think it's currently two thousand nine. And it's not set up as well. We're getting a lot better parity between the two ambulances in terms of equipment, but we will be looking to update that one. It's, that's probably currently like a twenty-five thousand dollar ambulance, the one we purchased in January, paid two hundred and eighty thousand for. Uh, and probably gonna be trying to step into a hundred and fifty thousand dollar ambulance for the next two to three years or sooner, if one comes available. Market's pretty hard.
I just, you know, we're about, what, two thousand people now, so what happens if, all right, we jump to four thousand, you know, what does that do to you guys? You know, I mean, you don't have to answer that now, but.
No, it's.
But, uh, I think what's a big point when you guys are gonna have to either add, add on to your building to get more equipment in or buy more.
I think we're sitting pretty well in terms of our building, um, in turn, at least in Piazza. I honestly, speaking candidly, I would like to see us be able to do something a little better in Centralia because we just have one door and the trucks are backed in too deep, so I, I do think we're sitting very well in Piazza. We'll probably keep an ambulance in Piazza and Centralia for
for forever. Um, it does allow us to have an ambulance on both sides of the tracks, which benefits Piasta greatly too. Obviously, if there's a train blocking, we can respond to an incident no matter where it's at. So that's a big reason that we do that. Did I answer questions?
Yeah. Do you service, um, Thunder Ridge, Birds?
Thunder Ridge and Birds are ours, Thunder Hills is up worth. Yeah, parent. Parenting heights is it?
If there's some.
Yeah, is there a redistricting? I mean, who, who does it, who makes the first?
They've been that way for, it's been that way.
But if he does, seriously, I mean, how can we get that redistricted?
I can, I can, that comes. Yeah, I mean, that would be. When it becomes city, I mean, if you get an annexed, that's my.
That was the reason I was asking if you already service it, because if they're gonna service it, if they do, annexed, then it's not, it's not an additional.
Is Barrington Lakes annexed into the city yet? No. But it's still there. Correct, that's ours, and part of the reason, we, we do have a station over there now too. And part of the reason that they wanted to do that was so that they could do an annexation, at least that's what their, this is their organization called.
Homeowners.
Homeowners. That was their lot. They, they helped significantly in terms of financing for both that, well, I think they provided the station and then they provided financing towards new members and, um, the apparatus that's a station now as well.
Thank you.
Always happy to answer questions. Has all the information I can about the department.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Might as well stick. Me too.
Yeah.
Let's go.
Thanks.
Don't ask twice, guys.
That's right.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to a closed session of courts with chapter twenty-one point five, one J, State Code, Iowa, which reads as follows, discuss the purchase for sale of particular real estate, only for remission disclosure, could be reasonably expected to increase the price of government body would have to pay for the property, or increase the price of government body would receive for property.
Hold on a second. Doug, I.
Lexi, I.
Justin, I.
Karen, I.